Good morning, colleagues, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for May the 10th. We'll begin with our [inaudible] item 42.
My DoC Community Resources approve issuance of requests for proposals for year-round emergency shelter, multi-service center operator, and armory emergency shelter program. And we do have two speaker requests.
Okay, the first speaker can come forth, please.
Paul Hyer.
I'm Paul Hyke, is how it's pronounced, like a long walk. One, we need that shelter. Two, in the interim, could we set it up where we have a portable shower and laundry come in? We have groups to do that. We could make that a location. Three, we've had a couple of illegal thumps of patients from one hospital twice this year. Once, one of them was across the street, and the other one was in Fullerton. Chapman General Hospital. Wrote out the address, had them delivered, and left them. The one at the shelter in Fullerton didn't even have street clothes. Can you believe that? And I'd like to see this shelter go, not only have the RFP for the provider, but make it also for security, to be able to bid on this as well, with some hotel experience. Hotel and motel, they get special training for that. That's into my time. Thank you much.
All right, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Last speaker, Scott Larson.
Well, good morning, Chairwoman Bartlett and members of the board. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm Scott Larson. I'm the Executive Director for Homemade Orange County, and it's my privilege to serve as your Chair of the County's Commission on Homelessness. I just want to thank you for having this item on today's agenda. There's been a lot of work over the years to lead to this point, and there's more work to come. When the county first drafted the tenure plan on homelessness, the need to replace the two county armory programs, or at least supplement them, was on the top of the list. And this is, again, another one of the steps. First was identifying sites, which both Supervisor Nelson and others have been part of. But now you're at the point of approving an RFP for an operator and ultimately this management plan. I want to thank not only the members of your staff, but the community that has put in hours and hours of work to lead to this item, and want to commend you for your leadership and your approval of this item moving forward. And just know that as your Chairman of the Commission on Homelessness, we'll continue to work with you as this item moves forward, because not only does this project need to be successful, but it needs to be able to be replicable in other parts of the county. So we look forward to your positive movement today and then the actual implementation of the site on Kramer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Spitzer?
Yeah, hey, Scott, hold on a second real quick. I just want to acknowledge you on the board. Colleagues, at the Human Relations Commission dinner that the Chair and I attended on, I lose track of days, but it was last week, wasn't it? On Thursday night or something? When was it, Scott? You were there.
Yeah, it was Thursday night.
Oh, perfect, okay. Mr. Larson was honored by the Human Relations Commission and publicly acknowledged for all his, you know, resolve to continue to push these projects forward. And the acknowledgement of the work he's done, and certainly Julia Bidwell, and there's a whole host of people who were involved in getting us to this point, and so I want to, and Karen, of course, with Karen deciding to retire after, what, 37 years, 35, 32, it's a big number, right, with the county? Kind of, you said to Karen, what would have been a good time to retire, right? Given all the things we have yet to do and how far we've come, this, it was the right time. In other words, there's always going to be more to do. So Karen, it's never like, okay, so I think this was a milestone, right? Purchasing the property and now releasing the RFP. But I do want to dovetail on something you said, and I think I might have mentioned it at the Human Relations Commission dinner. This RFP is really significant, because it's not like a lot of other RFPs that we tend to do in the normal course of business as a county. What Mr. Larson said is a really important point that we're going to need to dwell on for a while. And that is that if we don't do this correct, we won't be able to cite another homeless shelter, because if the community doesn't accept it, or we have problems, or the vendor isn't accountable, or we have walk-ups, or we have trash in the streets, or people congregating in that area, or all the other things that are foreseeable, every other community will say no, because they'll point to Anaheim and say, see, you couldn't do it right. So how we do this, like this, a lot of times, right, we vote, we do an RFP, it comes back with recommendation, and we say, okay, great, go and conquer, and we just go on to other projects. This is something that we're going to have to, you know, really babysit to make sure we get it right. And I would submit to you, Mr. Kim and Ms. Bidwell, we're going to have to fine-tune, like, we're, you know, right? It's like, you know, we're going to have to make some decisions. Do we change the lure? Do we fish at the surface? Do we go to the bot? You know, we're always going to have, in my mind, kind of recalibrate how we're doing things so we get it right, because we haven't done this before. Now, we've done the armories, but we haven't done 24/7/365. So I just wanted to congratulate you for your, the public acknowledgement of your hard work. It was certainly well-deserved. I was glad that we were able to participate in your award, and really, Scott, you've done a ton for this county, so thank you very much.
I appreciate that very much, Supervisor Spitzer, and it is great to be able to see where we're heading on things in the county. We're at monumental steps as far as where we've been and where we're heading, and I appreciate your personal acknowledgement of myself and of your leadership as well, particularly the Kramer site. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Ms. Bidwell, do you have a moment? So as you're coming forward, I've asked you these questions, so you're not going to be surprised, but I just don't, I want to make sure I understand the answer. The way this RFP is structured, it will request proposals for the Kramer site and then the two armories. And rather than me articulating it, but the point is, somebody could either bid Kramer or both, and somehow you're going to ensure they're scored separately, and that when you come forward with a recommendation, we're going to understand clearly what we can pick and choose from. That, I want to make sure when I'm sitting here, whenever that is, to pick a winner or a recommended firm, that it is unequivocally clear what we're, what we're doing, right? Kramer, armories, and then there's, if you could also address in your answer, what is the resolution of keeping the armories open, even with Kramer? Because we keep talking about it, but we haven't, I don't think we've sufficiently landed on that issue. This seems to beg the question it's answered, because we're doing an RFP, but I'd like to hear what you think.
Sure, thank you. Julia Bidwell, Interim Director, Housing, Community Development, and Homeless Prevention. This RFP is structured for selection of both an operator of the Kramer site and the Armory Emergency Shelter Program. When writing this for the Armory Emergency Shelter Program, we put in facility or facilities. Quite honestly, we've been writing this RFP for a while, and we came up to this current season. We are recommending because of the timing and the fiscal year contracts, and actually in item number 64 is the fiscal year 1617 funding for the armory contracts. Your board had authorized us to negotiate extensions with Mercy House for two years. Last year was the first year, 1617 will be the second year of that. So we will have an operator in place for the 1617 season, as the Kramer site will not yet be open. So there will still be a need for operation of the Armory Emergency Shelter Program as we know it today, which is both the Santa Ana and the Fullerton locations. In the history of doing this, and in the tenure plan, it has been historical that we were looking at the armory program as closing, as we opened up these emergency shelters. Quite honestly, that has been the history that I've been involved with in looking at this. In order to bring maximum opportunities to your board for this discussion, we crafted this RFP to make it one or more operators being able to operate either the Kramer and/or the Armory program. If there is, in fact, one site that is remaining in the Armory program, it doesn't necessarily have efficiencies, and somebody could bring staffing and leveraging opportunities with the Kramer site and the Armory program. So those are all things that we considered in crafting this RFP. Technically, it has two different application components. When you get into the physical application, one is a set of questions, budget for just the Kramer site, and then independent of that are questions and budgets for the Armory site. There are questions within there that tie them. If an operator is applying for both, we ask them what efficiencies they may gain in applying for both the Kramer and the Armory operator. So I hope that gives you a historical perspective, or at least where we're coming out from staff recommendation, and I look forward to any policy direction.
Could you, okay, so in the tenure plan, the idea was open up the 24/7 shelters, and that would transition out the need for an armory. Do I have that right?
Correct.
Okay. But with a 200-bed, 24/7 Kramer, that doesn't address the need or the demand, in my mind, at all. So are we going to have to update the tenure plan? Is Mr. Larson, is the Commission going to help us and give us advice about what it thinks we should be doing in that regard, as we're kind of transitioning from permanent to more transitional? Because when I, when I spent some time at the Santa Ana Armory this last season, the individuals coming there are not necessarily the individuals who want to be in a wraparound 24/7 care. Some people are just looking for a place to lay down, and they want out, and they don't want to kind of give up their freedom, and they want to be independent, and they don't want a bunch of rules, and they don't want to be screened for felony warrants and sex offender status. So there are other populations, right, that we need to target. But I don't expect you to know all the answers to, I'm sure you have a lot of opinions, but I'm just worried we're getting to a juncture where we haven't had the conversation of how we're going to balance armory versus Kramer. And you'll probably say, well, maybe if we have Kramer plus another site, that'll start to reduce the demand. I'm guessing that, just logically, that would be some of the arguments. So can you just, in two sentences, or maybe three, can you just kind of just, where do you think we're going? And then what work do we have to do as a board to deal with that balance of armory versus shelter?
Shelter is only one component of what we call the continuum of care. We've been trying to, what we call, right-size our system for the individuals that we have that are homeless. We both have sheltered and unsheltered homeless in the county. Primarily, when we're talking about shelter, we're talking about the unsheltered or the street homeless, which is roughly 2,000 individuals, but that's across the entire county. We, in the Armory program this last year, we did not reach capacity at both sites every single night. The Santa Ana Armory tends to run a little bit lower in numbers than the Fullerton Armory, but neither one consistently reached capacity throughout the season. What we really have an opportunity to do, and where shelter comes in, and there was a recent article written on San Diego, and they're very similar to us, in a very low vacancy, high-cost market, these shelters become an important component of trying to house people. I know that seems maybe illogical, because this is shelter, but we're trying not to have individuals stay at the shelter longer than 30 days as a best-practice model. So we're building these shelters as just an interim step, where we really need resources is on the permanent housing and the rapid rehousing side of things. You'll see and notice in our RFP that we did include the rapid rehousing program funds that we've had traditionally available with the Armory program. We're trying to make that available to this shelter operator as well. So there are many moving components in it. Shelter is one. Some of the best-practice models tell us not to build shelter. They tell us to build housing. But it's almost like operating a hospital without a waiting room, especially when you have low vacancy in a high-cost housing market. So we have a lot of incremental steps, and I guess you're talking to a houser by trade. That is my background, developing and financing affordable housing, which your board has supported $8 million for the development of permanent supportive housing in our current NOFA. So that was a much longer-than-three-sentence answer, because it's complicated.
Well, we're, in closing on my comments, Madam Chair, we're obviously very, we're very lucky, Ms. Bidwell, that with Ms. Roper, she's kind of an iconic figure in this whole movement, that you have been there for many years at her side, carrying your own, you know, burdens, if you will, but ready to step up in this event that Karen decided, and rightfully so, to retire. So I'm very confident that we are moving without a hitch, and that you're the right person to successfully implement this. You've got a lot of people supporting you, and I know you know that, and I know you're very appreciative, so thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Yes, Julie and Scott, we could not have made the progress we've made without both of you participating on a daily basis and working through the issues. I know that, you know, with the, with the armories and in the homeless shelter, we're looking, it's kind of a stop-gap measure to get us to the permanent supportive housing and the rapid rehousing, but we will get there. We've got, you know, developers in the community that want to work with us. We've got some 45 acres of low-income housing we're going to be able to put into one of our South County developments that we're really excited about. So we're making those important steps, but the armories and the shelter on North Kramer provides that interim basis for those folks who really need that second step before they get to final permanent supportive housing. So it's a great stepping stone, and we appreciate you and Scott working through the process with us.
Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Nelson?
Hi. Julia, can you ensure us, the Kramer site, the concept was to replace the temporary armory facility. When Kramer is open, the North County Armory will close, correct?
Yes, if that is the direction of your Board of Supervisors.
Well, absent further direction, what is your intention as of today if we don't say or do anything?
Based on the tenure plan, historically, my understanding was to close the shelters when Kramer's open, when year-round shelters open.
When you say shelters, my question was not about shelters.
No, if there was one.
I just need to know. I use very careful language, it's my curse, but those do not mean the same thing, so I'm just, I'm not asking about Santa Ana, perhaps I should. Is it your understanding that Santa Ana's armory is going to close?
No.
Okay, but Fullerton's will when Kramer opens?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I mean, absent some other arrangement, that's what the current plan is. Thank you.
Okay, any more comments? Supervisor Spitzer?
Well, that's my concern, is that, I mean, think about this, right? We're having a conversation about getting clarity from the board, because Supervisor Nelson has an understanding. I don't have any understanding. I'm kind of, I'm just, I have like a palate, and I'm trying to get information. And the thing I care about is serving the need, not just because a tenure plan has a bright line that says, because you open a 200-bed facility, you're going to close something else. I get the logic, and I get the vision in the tenure plan, but what I'm concerned about is, do we need to have a conversation? That irrespective of Kramer, there's still going to be a need for temporary shelter vis-à-vis a armory. So I, Ms. Bidwell, I'm trying to be, I, you know, I was a trial lawyer, right? So body language is really important to me about when people answer questions, and it looked, you looked strained when you gave Supervisor Nelson that, that answer, as if, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, as if you understand that that was a commitment, but you yourself may not know or believe that that may or may not be the right thing to do. And so I'm not asking for answers today. I'm just trying to observe that we may have differences of opinion about where we are. And I think we need, Mr. Larson, I really think it's the Commission. I certainly would just ask the Commission to engage in a dialogue about whether or not that is still the right thing to do, and where the funds would come from, blah, 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 blah. That's all I'm saying. I'm not picking or whatever. I don't, I don't even have enough information. But my gut tells me with 4,500 people per the homeless count, living on the streets every night, that's our number for the homeless count, 200 beds isn't going to cut it. That's what my gut tells me. And I'm just trying to use simple math. Now, I get the reduction in, you know, the stuff that you talked about, Ms. Bidwell, and I saw my own observation in Santa Ana, but if there was a promise, and people relied on it, to vote on whether to move forward with Kramer or to close the armory, we have to respect that. But I think we need a conversation before we make any definitive choices about shutting something down that we have today. That's, that's all I'm inferring.
Right, but you just made two contrasting statements.
Right.
The entirety of the effort, the entirety of the effort in North County was to close the armory and replace it with a 24/7, 365-day-a-year facility. So absent that beginning, we don't even get here. The city of Fullerton, the city of Anaheim, put in substantial money, because that is the entirety of the deal. That is the deal.
Okay.
You may not know that, but that's, I mean, but you should. That's the whole point, is these cities got behind this effort for one purpose. Give us a permanent facility, this short-term, temporary, 12-hour-a-day concept does not work. So the North County Armory is not supposed to solve the county's problem, but specifically it is to resolve the issue of short-term armory and replace it. The rest of the county has other major issues, as we're all well aware of, but, but let's keep track of the moving parts here. North County's armory is, the whole point is, it is to be closed upon the opening of this. That was the deal. That was the entire beginning of the, the whole discussion for the North County site. Central County, despite the fact that Mr. Sarmiento and the Santa Ana City Council didn't seem to know the facts, Central County, we had a plan, we had a site, we listened to the city, they told us where to look, we found a location, they had the process, and then they acted stunned when we put it where they told us. And, and we end up not moving on that. That's still an open wound, and there's obviously West and South County. But North County, there's not a conversation, there's not facts uncompleted that, hey, we'll eventually get to. No, there was a very definitive universe of information that went into getting to this point, and if none of that matters or is relevant to this conclusion, then we've got to start over, and we've completely misled at least 700,000 people, because they have all in a direct understanding that this is a singular purpose. It is to improve upon the temporary shelter on Brookhurst Avenue at Valencia in Fullerton, California, that La Habra, Buena Park, Fullerton, Anaheim has all been using for more than 20 years. And that is a cornerstone of what we're doing and why. And it's never left. And the idea that, well, you know, maybe things have changed, well, if that's happened, somebody better raise a real big red flag very quickly, because that would otherwise be a real cheap, low blow to, at the last minute, go through, drag all these people into their commitment, and then suddenly tell them, oh, you know what, there's, there's a completely new program? That would have been made up today, so I'm just assuming that didn't happen. But, you know, the reason I asked, I don't want to hear reluctance. I mean, I've been shedding blood on this battlefield for the entire time I've been here, to accomplish a resolution to a specific problem, not resolving the whole homeless issue in the county. That's what the committee's for, a lot of other pieces remain. But this one better not have some ulterior motive or some hidden outcome that hasn't been shared to this point. That would be a real problem.
Yeah, that, listen, I've been pushing to have this conversation because of those kinds of commitments. I mean, Fullerton put up a million, Anaheim put up a million, and all the other cities in your district going north from there, Placentia, Brea, I don't think La Habra was all that involved, but, and Yorba Linda on my district, a little bit on the outskirts, but not to the extent of the cities that you mentioned. But what that means is, if we're going to adhere to both those understandings and the tenure plan, then the rest of the county better get busy. Because the demand, either we're going to have to use the 200, which our goal is, over time, right, to put people into permanent housing and get them off the streets and improve their lives, and help those that can help themselves. There's a, there's clearly a population of the homeless, just like with Medi-Cal or other things, that will always need a safety net. It's just, that's inevitable. There's a percentage. They'll never be able to work or take care of themselves. That's just the facts. But the demand and the need is so overwhelming, that 200 beds here and 100 beds here and all that, that ain't going to cut it anymore. So I guess the only thing I'm trying to make sure it's unequivocally clear from my perspective is that I feel like we've turned a huge corner in this county when it comes to dealing with the homeless. Man, the turnout on the public speakers when we had our public forums was phenomenal. The religious community, specifically the diocese, was, came out in droves. They were so helpful in driving this conversation. I told Rusty Kennedy, he played a big role in organizing the speakers. That was dramatic and important. And I don't want to see the release of the RFP or the opening of Kramer being misperceived to have somehow either fulfilled the demand or taken off the pressure for the momentum that we've created collectively as a county to deal with the homeless issue. So it's really important to, one, be really open and out there and have these conversations. We, you know, we're five members. We don't have the luxury of congregating in our offices and working all this stuff out. We do a lot of ugly things in public just because we make sausage, because that's the law, in public. But I'm really glad we had this conversation, because now it really stresses the importance of doing it right, right, Scott, your point, my point, others, and keeping the momentum for other locations. That's critical. And we cannot see this as, okay, we're done, we fulfilled it, pat ourselves on the back, we did a good job, we can't, that would be a huge mistake. That, I don't think anybody in here, you're all advocates, I don't think anybody's, but the perception could be, our work is done. Our work is not done. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Okay, CEO, comments?
I just wanted to clarify for the board that our existing cooperative funding agreements that we have with both the city of Anaheim and Fullerton identify that, that Fullerton Armory is intending to close once our new Anaheim, excuse me, the Kramer site is fully operational. So that is the current agreement that we have approved by your board, and that is the direction that we are taking.
Okay, and I appreciate staff looking at what's happening throughout the state, because there are a lot of lessons learned. You can build a shelter, but you've got to get people there. Transportation is one thing, services are another. I know that a new shelter opened up in, I think, in San Francisco area, and it would, it would be great to serve the population up there. And after it opened, I think there were 22 people that showed up, which was really sad. So we have to look at everything holistically, not just build it and expect people to come. We've got to work on all of the ancillary services and the social services and medical services and other things that are going to be able to get people to the shelter, get them what they need as far as services and other things, food, clothing, shelter, and the basics, and then be able to move them into the permanent supportive housing. So I think at the county, what I'm happy about is that we're looking at things both short-term and long-term. This isn't just a Band-Aid. This is something that is a long-term problem, and we need a long-term solution to get people into permanent housing down the road, but also work with the various county departments with regard to healthcare, social services, and other things. So I think we're, we're taking a very holistic approach, and I think we're going to have a great long-term solution, so I'm really excited about that. All right, no further comments? Do we have a motion on this item?
No, we don't.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Doe, and second by Vice Chair Steele. Any opposition? All right, that item passes.
I don't know.
We'll now move on to the public comments section of the agenda. At this time, members of the public may address Board of Supervisors regarding any off-agenda items within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized. provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person and 20 minutes for all comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, we have five requests.
Speaker, please.
The last two speakers are Lou Noble and R. Joshua Collins. I don't see them.
Mr. Noble? Mr. Collins? Okay, they may have left before the conclusion of the meeting. All right. All right, we now have our board member, well, actually, we'll start with CEO comments.
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay, board member comments. Supervisor Doe. I think Supervisor Nelson. Supervisor Spencer?
Yeah, I just wanted to update you real quick, colleagues, why 65 was deleted. This is a CLO Vista project. There was a NAC-Catcher finding on the property that was not disclosed to County Planning Department. It had been filed with the state agency, so that's how it was discovered because it's required to process NAC-Catcher findings with the Resource Agency, but it had not been turned over, and it was over two years old. So when I found out about it, staff, when staff was advised of it, they contacted me. I deferred to their professional judgment. I didn't tell them how to, or infer how to deal with it. But certainly, it's my understanding that there's going to be a new biological because of the NAC-Cachers, and if there's no NAC-Cachers, fine. But I think it's really important for all of us when we have developments in our district that, when developers do not disclose documents they're required to disclose, that, I mean, that's serious. And it's, it was pretty upsetting to find out about it and to learn about it. And so I just wanted to let you know, it wasn't haphazard why the hearing didn't happen today, but I think staff has directed the developer to get a biologist back out to the property and do a new biological survey. So that's what the delay was for. Thank you very much.
Okay. Vice Chair Steele? Okay. All right. Do we have any board member adjournments? No? Okay. Closed session? Madam Clerk, do we have any items for closed session today?
Yes, we do have three. Supplemental, closed session three, under County Council, Conference of Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9, Pern D, Pern 1. Name of case, Felipe Jacquez versus County of Orange. Supplemental, closed session four, under County Council, Conference of Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9, Pern D, Pern 1. Name of case, Lisa Olvera versus County of Orange. And supplemental, closed session six, under County Council, Conference of Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 5495-6.9, Pern D, Pern 1. Name of case, Los Angeles Engineering, Inc., et cetera, versus County of Orange.
Okay, Mr. Page, will we have any reportable action from closed session?
Possibly on items three and four.
Okay, great, thank you. At this time, we'll rest us in a closed session.